And welcome back, board members and welcome to the MCPS staff and Dr. McKnight. At this time, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
We've approved.
All in favor, raise your hand. And that is unanimous. Thank you. Dr. McKnight, do you want to begin the discussion?
Good afternoon, President Wolf, Vice President Sylvesteri and members of the Board of Education. Thank you for joining us today for a session to discuss virtual inclement weather plan for our current school year. I'll begin by saying we still find ourselves in many challenging circumstances impacting our students, staff and community after nearly being in almost two years of managing the needs of the pandemic. And now here we find ourselves in the middle of winter in Maryland and surprising to all of us, January has been a pretty eventful month of the weather despite what the almanac said. And so we are just here addressing some of the needs that we have acknowledged as we still navigate through the pandemic, but also considering some options that would help our students and staff transition as we look at all of our processes, quite frankly, and continue to consider what makes sense today. I don't want to go further without acknowledging that many of our community members are recognizing and celebrating Lunar New Year today. And so this is an opportunity where we continue to put and reflect on the past and look forward to a fresh start. And I just found that resonating clearly in our conversation today because for years we have always built into our calendar weather event days and we have in some cases exceeded that. And in years past, we've made those days up. I can remember actually a number of years and I believe it was 2015, 2016 when I was actually serving as a principal or sometime in the past. I do remember we had a makeup day that occurred during spring break and that was one of the most difficult days to coordinate staff to be able to supervise students.
Of instruction and mitigating learning disruption, and particularly when we know that it is important for our staff and students to be able to connect on a more routine basis. So today, our staff is going to share an innovative approach to a single days of inclement weather. And I am excited that they have done that work, and I'm thankful for the input for every stakeholder who took the time to complete this survey and answer any questions. I just want to thank you for that because as we develop this plan, we also want to know that it's one that reflects the values of our families and our students, our staff, everyone who's involved in implementing this plan. So with that, I will say thank you again to our community and thank you to the staff who've worked on this. I'll turn it over at this time to Mr. Doug Hollis, who was with us, and we'll kick off the presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Midnight. If we could have the slide deck, please. It's Mrs. Wolf and members of the board. We're just going to walk through a few things related to this discussion, and we'll begin with the little context and stakeholder engagement. If we can go to the next slide, please. And one more slide. As Dr. Midnight has mentioned, the state of Maryland requires 180 days of instruction. MCPS scheduled 182 days, and then we modified our calendar to 181 days to allow for the Wednesday before Thanksgiving to be a day off and holiday for all of us. With that, we have used four snow days in the month of January, January 1st, excuse me, January the 3rd, January the 4th, January the 7th, and January the 20th. And so we need to make up three days. And so while this is just context around makeup days, I wanted to just share here at the bottom of this slide, those opportunities. And in coming weeks, we will be communicating more with the board as well as public to share what we will do to make up days that we are required to make up to have the full 180 days of instruction. There are some professional development days and some non-instructional days, as well as some makeup days at the end of the year that would extend the school year that are options that are already approved and built into our calendar. And so the state would ask us to look at those things first. But the state also has created a pathway for us to not accrue any additional days. And so that is what we want to focus our discussion on today. Next slide. So here, what we will find is just the opening to an application that the state put out and made available to us in anticipation of inclement weather days, snow days. In the 2021-2022 school year, the Maryland State Department of Education, MSDE, has opened up a pathway for local school systems to repurpose inclement weather days as virtual school days. And so this is something that we applied to. They asked for specific areas for us to comment on. This was at a very high level. Today, we'll spend more time to discuss the really features of the plan itself and our engagement. But at a high level, they wanted to know about our devices and our ability to provide for our students' devices and access in terms of internet and technology. They also wondered about accommodations. I wanted to make sure that we were able to reach our students who have IEPs, 504 plans, and meet their learning accommodations accordingly. And then they also wanted us to make sure that we had engaged and also have a communication plan for you all. And so these are aspects that have been included in our application. And we're excited because Dr. Midnight did receive a email from our state superintendent this weekend that said that our application has been approved, and they look forward for our further conversation with you all today. And with that said, I want to turn it over to now Mrs. Edwards, who will go through some of our stakeholder engagement.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mr. House. Good afternoon, President Wolf, as well as Vice President Sylvester. Thank you for the opportunity. I would like to share with you how we gain student, staff, and family voices and the processes in which we did so. If you go to the next slide, to ensure we have perspective when we consider virtual instruction on a day where inclement weather was an option for us, we employed two different methods in order to capture this information. We took an opportunity with our families to be able to send out a community survey to all of our families within the district that was translated into multiple languages in order to be able to gain their perspective. And then the second approach we used were Zoom input sessions, and we captured input during those sessions through dialogue, as well as focused on some key areas. Those Zoom input sessions were important because it does create that alternative approach and openness and a discussion that sometimes you just do not receive through a survey. We learned really good lessons last year, as well as this year when we offered virtual instruction, and we wanted to be able to learn from that in order to build out the plan where we are now. The input sessions that our stakeholders went through really focused on the following areas for considerations and solutions based on technology, the bell schedule, teacher planning, timing of the announcement, instruction, and meal services to students. And during these times, our stakeholders were able to provide any additional questions or additional thoughts around other areas to bring up and for us to really be able to consider as we move forward. But we really took that opportunity to really think through a variety of different lenses. On the next slide, for our stakeholder feedback survey for our community, this community survey was emailed, as well as posted on the website and shared on various social media outlets for our families to be able to provide responses. The results yielded us 20, over 26,000 responses from different families throughout the district. What you see here is the race and ethnicity breakdown of the children of those families who responded to those particular surveys. On the next slide, we're able to see by level in terms of, I'm sorry, on this slide, you're able to see through the demographic breakdown, the preference of our families in terms of if they would like to look at virtual instruction, should we have an inclement weather day, or if they would like a traditional snow day that we currently have now. And what we see pretty much is we have a bit of a varied response. For many of our families, they still want to be able to access the virtual instruction day, as well as with the snow day. And as Dr. McKnight stated in her opening comments, this is an opportunity for us to look at a varied approach, but having this as one of the options in terms of virtual instruction in terms of moving forward. On the next slide, it gives you a little bit more information from that survey that shares with you in terms of the level of the students and the family's response to that level. For our elementary learners, about 48% of our families look forward to the opportunity to offer virtual instruction on an inclement weather day, where about 51% are looking at being able to still have their child move into an actual snow day with no instruction. But as we look at the middle school level, we see a little bit of a difference where more of our families are interested in being able to offer that opportunity for virtual instruction. We had many families who had more students who were in blended schools, elementary or middle, or middle or high, and that was important for us to be able to capture because the perspective sometimes that families who have children in multiple levels will share different things. So overall, in terms of looking at the data, our community shares with us that they have an interest for both in being able to offer virtual, as well as the opportunity to still be able to access inclement weather day should we need to do so. On the next slide, earlier I shared the stakeholder groups who engage through Zoom input sessions. I'd like to share with you some of the trends that elevated through these particular sessions so that you're able to see and you will hear throughout the rest of the presentation, spaces that were of interest to us. And one of the critical things is we ask for folks to kind of problem solve and be solution oriented if there were areas that continue to come up. For our students, we did engage with our SMOB Advisory Council, as well as the Superintendent's Leadership Academy. And what you'll see through many of the stakeholder pieces for input, access to internet or inconsistency and connectivity. So everyone really wants to make sure that people can get connected and remain connected. And in what ways are we being able to support that? Should we be out and really approach this, approach virtual instruction during that time? Meals were very important for our students to be able to have, as well as how we communicate and communicating in advance so that our system as a whole has a level of readiness. Students and staff alike are taking home the necessary resources that they need. Within our student group, as well as our staff group, one of the pieces that we did hear was that very interest of really thinking about the balance of home and life and school needs. That when we are home and we are doing virtual instruction, there are things that we do not experience in a normal school day. And so there was an interest from all areas to really think about how is it that we provide time within the morning to allow students, staff, and families to really be able to prepare themselves to actively engage in the learning process. One of the key recommendations that came out from every group was to be able to utilize a two-hour delayed bell schedule that all of our schools currently have in place because it was something that, one, wouldn't have to be created, two, it would offer the opportunity for planning and preparation for our teachers, and three, it would give the opportunity, as I shared, for all stakeholders to be able to ready themselves for the day. If you go to the next slide, the additional stakeholder groups that we engage with directly through those Zoom input sessions are also one for our families. We did do the survey. But I think what we found throughout the years, the survey is just one method and one opportunity to really do a very wide, a widespread net to try to gather input. We found that having those direct conversations with many families, as well as many students, provide us that opportunity. We were able to engage with FEAT, our Latino Student Achievement Action Group, and the MCCPTA. And again, some of the areas that they've identified here as certain trends were also the trends that we saw for students, as well as our staff members alike. And being able to use those existing groups to be able to do that. But again, really thinking about that internet access and that level of readiness, as well as how is it with our youngest learners that we actually prepare them to engage in a level of virtual instruction. We have also had communication and work and collaboration with our employee association leadership. And here you will see some of their identified interests that also coincide with what our student, staff, and families have said, and the work that they have done with their employees as well, with their staff in order to gain this information. They too believe in having that planning time for teachers and being able to utilize the existing two-hour delay schedule. The communication is critical in how we have that level of readiness. Being able to provide employees an opportunity to tell a work off-site was also an area of interest. And then really looking at the days that are currently identified within our calendar that we've already said through the process of adopting our calendar that our professional days and our spring break days that we want to utilize as makeup days, there's an interest to consider changing and really elevating those days from full days into early release days. So this provides you an overview of some of the input that we've received from our different stakeholder groups, which then you will see will show up within the rest of the presentation and that we've been attentive to and really been solution oriented around considering this approach. I will now open an opportunity for discussion from our board members. President Wolf, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions at this time? Please raise your hand. Ms. Looney. Ms. Looney?
Yes. Why were students or staff not surveyed?
Students were not surveyed in this particular situation. We did some engagement, and we've done that before, where we've engaged students directly in terms of having the dialogue. We found the dialogue to be more effective. They were able to provide input during that time. In addition, for those groups that we talked about, many of those students do represent a larger mass of students in order to be able to gain their feedback. For the staff not being surveyed, we have some existing structures. One I didn't highlight that was there was the design team, which is formerly known as the Fall Design Team. Throughout this year, the Fall Design Team has really served as a really good spot for us in terms of building out our quarantine instructional plan, the shift when we make the change to virtual instruction for 10 days. And that group is comprised of members of staff that are identified by our employee associations. The second component is, and working with our employee associations, they share the interest of the employees that they actually work with. In addition to that, not only working with the employee association leadership, we also were to engage with probably over 100 administrators to be able to hear the operational perspective from their vantage point through, again, those Zoom sessions, as well as MCEA did some engagement with members of their Board of Directors and some of their building representatives within the location, and then SEIU leadership provided perspective. So we went about it in different ways, being able to have the dialogue and understanding. The community survey, we knew we were not able to do that full scale with every single community number, but this gave us an opportunity to cast the net, but also to have that level of conversation needed to have discussion, explanation, dialogue, and problem solution oriented.
Yeah, I want to say that I did take a look at the survey that was sent out, and it wasn't directed towards the entire community. It was very clearly labeled that it was a parent survey. And even within the actual structure of the questions, it very specifically said, you know, my child, what would your child prefer? What ethnicity is your child, right? So I think we did miss a significant portion of our stakeholders in this engagement. And I know that there was an effort made to engage with smaller groups of people, but as we talk about all the time in this system, every time we engage with a smaller group, that is a very select, oftentimes very privileged group of people who is able to access those spaces and access that dialogue. And I think we missed out on engaging this conversation with, first of all, students, which I think are really, really next to staff, the most heavily impacted by this decision. And I know my SMOB Advisory Council was listed as one of the groups that was engaged with, but the only conversation we ever really had was about the calendar as a whole and not about this issue specifically. So I would have personally appreciated a larger survey sent out to the entire community. I think that would have been a more representative way to engage with our stakeholders.
Thank you. Well, I'll just go ahead. Can you tell us what FEAT or F-E-A-T means again? I was on slide 11.
Dr. Daca, that's the family engagement and advisory team.
Family, okay. And on slide six, among the stakeholders, I did not see NAACP Parent Council, nor did I see AFAQ, African American, you know, the inside, the parent group and the staff group that worked on these issues. I did see Latino, but I didn't see that, and I didn't see Asian.
Dr. Daca, that is correct. Unfortunately, that was a missed opportunity for us to do that level of engagement with those groups, NAACP, APAG, as well as ASAG, to be able to gain their input. Because we have not operationalized it, it would still create a chance for us to be able to do that directly and not leave out that voice.
Yeah. Any other comments? Okay, Ms. Edwards, do you want to continue, or Dr. McKnight?
Ms. Wolf, at this time, I would like to move the presentation to the next slide. And that will be Mrs. Morris, who will share about the virtual instruction requirements approaching technology.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards. Good afternoon, board. Dr. McKnight. I'm excited to share and highlight some of the components that make up the virtual instruction requirements, approach, and technology. Ms. Edwards shared around engagement, and now we just want to get into what it will look like, what it will feel like, and what our parents and students can expect if this shift were to happen. Next slide, please. So as you know, we take our direction from the Maryland State Department of Education. And when we talk about, when we talk about the shift to virtual for a snow day in the way that we are, they clearly outlined some criteria that we are required to adhere to. On this slide, it outlines exactly what that criteria is, which includes a minimum of four hours of synchronous instruction, attendance must be taken, opportunities for students to make up miswork, the virtual plan must be posted on the school website, on the system website, and it must be presented at a board meeting, which we're doing here today. Next slide, please. So again, to highlight some of the instructional approaches that we've included, again, the minimum of four hours, which we will be able to do if we abide by the two-hour schedule. That was an important piece that came up at the design team meeting from the members, particularly our teacher participants, who said it made sense to do the two-hour delay because families already know that schedule for their specific school, and it would allow staff that additional planning time that Ms. Edwards spoke to earlier. The other thing is the Zoom sessions. We would ensure that the link to all Zooms would be on each teacher's homepage in my MCPS classroom or Canvas for easy access. Again, students are used to going there for this reason and manipulating and managing the page. Links to all Zooms can be communicated via email. We'll also use Synergy Mail and Connect Ed. And the sessions will be accessible from any device. That includes Chromebooks, laptops, personal computers, iPads, and phones. We thought this was a really important feature to provide our families. And lastly, synchronous instructional time will include a variety of experiences that would include direct instruction, small group instruction, group projects, interactive experiences, which we hope would mirror the instruction students receive in person. Next slide, please. So here we have a sample schedule. Again, I want to elevate that the two-hour delay is something that all schools have a schedule already built for. So families are accustomed to that. The school staff is accustomed to that. Here we have an example of a schedule at the secondary level. And the reason we're doing this example is elementary has very unique schedules because of the tiered times that students attend due to transportation. We thought it would be confusing to put that sample up, but here I want to offer you an example of a seven-day period. So period one, 9:45 to 10:15, and then each period meets. So that's for our schools that currently have a seven-day block. Opposed to what you'll see on the side here is a two-hour delay bell schedule for block schedule. And we have several of our middle schools and high schools that run a block. So you can see how they parallel. Again, for secondary, it's much easier because they follow similar schedules. These are the two universal schedules that we offer. But with elementary, we have different schedules based on the start and end times of each school. Next slide, please. And lastly, I wanted to speak to attendance. As I shared in the guidance and parameters from the state, one of the things was attendance must be taken. And so this is an important feature that we needed to think through. And so because schools are utilizing a bell schedule that is already programmed into synergy, which is the two-hour delay, it can be selected for that day. What that allows then is for the display of those current times, the bell schedule and the course sequence in student view and parent view, and it will allow teachers to record attendance correctly for each period for secondary or by day for elementary. All assignments will be available in the MCPS classroom so that students who may not be able to attend live virtual instruction will have access to their work and will be given opportunities to complete it, which was another design parameter that the state required. So at this time, I'm going to transition to Dr. Trinkamp, who will walk us through the technology components of the plan.
Thank you. Could we advance to the next slide, please?
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. I want to spend a few minutes just talking about two pieces of technology readiness. First, focusing on the preparation that has been ongoing to pivot to a virtual day. And then the next is to talk about technology supports that would be available on the actual virtual day. So as you know, we've been focused on connectivity for a number of years with our umbrella of services. We have partnered with our local internet providers, and we've also invested a lot of funds, some of our SR money, into making sure that we have hotspots for our community that needs it. And that includes staff and students. To date, we've handed out more than 13,000 hotspots for families. And it's important to note that we've been handing out one hotspot per family. And sometimes it has been two hotspots per family if there are, you know, maybe four kids or more in the home that are needing to connect at the same time. We found that one hotspot just was not enough to support all of the kids on at the same time. So there are some families that maybe have two hotspots. And we've handed out to date about 1,800 hotspots per staff. We have an ongoing process where schools, as families ask for help with their internet connectivity, schools escalate that ask, and we make sure that a hotspot's delivered to the school for that family to, for that student to take home. In addition, we've focused on our devices. Up until the switch to virtual and the pandemic, we had classroom technology and carts, Chromebooks for our kids. But we quickly moved to a one-to-one model so that our students could have a device assigned to them, and they could take that device back and forth this year as needed. And so we're ensuring that all kids who need a device have one and the charger to go with it. And they can take that back and forth with them and making sure that they have that equipment now so that as an inclement weather day approaches, we're not scrambling to ensure that people have what they need, that we're making sure that's ongoing. We've invested, as you know, in our digital infrastructure, our learning software. And the three that really stand out that help with virtual days include our Zoom. And that's where our synchronous instruction takes place, where students connect with each other and their teacher, Canvas, which we call my MCPS classroom, where activities will be stored. And that way, if there happens to be connectivity issues, students can connect at a later time and access those learning experiences. And obviously, Google serves as a large platform as well, providing that anywhere, anytime access to Google Docs, slides, and other materials. The great thing about these technologies is that you do not need an MCPS device to actually connect. As long as you know your login and password, which we are able to provide, you can use any device that's available to you at a library, community center, your phone. So that helps on these emergency pivot days. And then the last topic is our learning opportunities. We want to make sure that our staff and our students and our families know how to use these technologies. So we've put some pieces in place. We have playlists, videos, quick guides in multiple languages up on the public website, as well as some professional development for staff to use with their students to prepare for this event. Next slide, please. This slide outlines our technology support on the day of a virtual day if we should need to pivot. And so for staff, some of these supports are ongoing anyway, so the help desk is always available to staff. We also have just-in-time resources that are always available to staff. But in addition to that, we plan to stand up live Zoom drop-ins. So any staff that's having difficulty or need some additional support during those two-hour planning time in the morning, that planning window, or throughout the day, they will have immediate access to a technology specialist. We plan to stand up a pop-up distribution site at Goody Drive. People are familiar with that site. That's the site we used for the last two years. So staff and not only that, but families can come. And obviously, we do need to make sure we pay attention to the weather, you know, but as long as offices are open, we will have staff on site to help support that. You know, but as long as offices are open, we will have staff on site to help support that. If the weather is such that we're not open, then we will expand the virtual technology support for our families. And staff do have the ability, again, pending weather and circumstances, to work or teach from an M C P S site. So not all of our sites, offices will be closed. On some of these weather events, as we've seen in the past. Students and parents, same thing, very similar supports. We have the distribution site in addition to technology support. We do have a pretty extensive community technology portal for just-in-time access. We have, we will have an open phone line available with support there. Who can speak multiple languages to help support our families. We have our website that's up and available at all times and we have an email address. So with that, Ms. Wolf, I want to turn it back over to you and the board to ask questions on the instructional model and on technology readiness.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions at this time? Ms. Harris?
Yeah, thank you. Question, when we're looking at the. Plan, the potential plan to pivot to virtual instruction for snow days. Are we looking sort of in the rearview window a bit to look at what attendance has been? In since the beginning of the year in either individual classrooms? Or since the first of the year, schools that have pivoted to a virtual model for a period of time? As a proxy for what we might expect attendance rates to be for a single day or maybe a couple of days with a weather, weather closure pivot?
So I'm happy to, to try and answer that. I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, Ms. Harris, but as an associate who's had several schools go through the shift to virtual. As I've checked in with principals, they have been pleased with the number of kids that have been logged on. They also have accessed their wellbeing teams so that whenever a student is not on, they're reaching out to help problem solve. So if it's a technology piece, the school is able to then connect them. But overall, it has been pretty positive in terms of the number of students in the schools where, where I've had. That have pivoted, but I would have to get you the exact percentages for attendance. I don't have that.
And Dr. Trinkamp, I think this one is for you. I thought I read somewhere, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that. As part of the, the technology piece of this. Students also have the ability still to use their school. As a connection point to either get a device, exchange a device that perhaps isn't working. Or or also, you know, or get a simple fix if they're having problems with, with technical problems.
Absolutely, yes. And I thank you for bringing that up. The I T S S and other key staff, absolutely, the, the, you know. Obviously, pending the weather and the circumstances and conditions. Oftentimes, our central offices and our administrative offices are open, which means our school buildings are accessible. Which means there will be staff on site and available. And we've been taking a look at what that role is for key staff and I T S Ss. Of course, we don't want to put our staff in harm's way to travel unnecessarily. But that local school is often the closest, it's the easiest for our family to get to very quickly. And and so we want to make sure that that is an option, you know, as appropriate for that, absolutely.
Yes, I'm also thinking too, if we were looking at predicting in advance, watching a forecast that looked like it was going to be highly impactful. You know, having schools emphasize the ability for students that might have issues with their devices to deal with them before we perhaps.
Absolutely, we have some guidance. Obviously, pending, you know, this meeting and additional communication out to our community. We do have some guidance for our teachers to, you know, we do have students that haven't been in a Zoom before. You know, they're, they're new to us or they're new, you know, kindergartners and, you know, or our first graders and. You know, and and up, right? So ensuring that teachers do a quick little practice to, you know, log in right in the classroom. And make sure they know where that Zoom link is going to be, making sure they know how to log into Canvas. And they know if they can't access that on the day for whatever reason, right? Maybe, maybe they're just having difficulty, maybe there's connectivity issues, you know, power outages, for whatever reason. How they can log in later and access those materials and be able to get that and practice with them once or twice before. You know, as we kind of anticipate that snow day and making sure they have their charger, they have a hotspot, they have a device. Ready to go so that we're not scrambling the day of and wishing that we did sort of this prep work in, in advance.
Any other questions? I'm not seeing any. Would you like to continue? Dr. McKnight or whoever. Ms. Harris, did you have a question?
Okay.
Dr. Dawson.
Yes, thank you. If we could have the slide deck, please. Meal service. So we wanted to talk about what that could look like and would look like in inclement weather, virtual shifts. Next slide, please. So one of the things that we would prepare for is the day prior, as we're seeing, because the weather starts to. We, we really get AccuWeather information early. We would be able to provide with the knowledge early to, to send grab and go meals. At the end of the day, for students to take home for the next day, which we have done in the past. On the day itself, there's no food, food distribution itself. And that, that has been the case simply because of weather conditions and clearing out to get staff into the buildings to be able to do these things. When we have inclement weather, that could be more than one day. We would then begin a grab and go meal distribution. At cluster sites geographically throughout the district so that we're able to hit high-impact areas. And have, have them close between eleven and one P M. This is the same approach that we took during. Virtual, during what we were doing last year and on days that we've, we've had to kind of work through. So the cluster model has worked for us. And if there are more than one day, again, that's, that's the big piece there. Next slide, please. So communication, what would that look like? Next slide, please. One of the things that we are prepared to do is to have community messages and to announce the process. So with this moving forward, we would again, send information out to our community, to all of our staff members. To all of our students and parents and families to ensure that they get this material, just like we have. For schools that are moving virtually in the current structures. When shifting to inclement weather for virtual learning, this would, would need to be a get-ready announcement. So that that day, we are reminding people to take their devices with them, to take things that they may need. As we see weather is imminent. And that's just a get-ready announcement. The decision announcement to shift to virtual again would state that. To ensure that everybody is on the same page and we know that we're moving into not only an inclement weather day, but this is the virtual shift. So it's really getting that prepared and readiness to move forward. We also would put information on our websites as we normally do and the resources. And provide one-page or resource document so that people know exactly with that community message, the process. And and what has been developed. Next slide. At this point, President Wolf, we are prepared for discussion of the entire. Presentation.
Thank you. I do have a question at this point. I'm pretty sure you already know what it is. If you're closed for more than one day, meal distribution between eleven and one is very inconvenient for a lot of our families. I wanted to know about the possibility of early distribution that you did when we were in virtual learning.
So one of the, if it, if it's more than one day, so more than one day. We have the possibility to, to discuss that. The big piece here is that first day is really about removal. It's about the ability to get into our kitchens to be able to provide those meals or boxes as necessary. So that's the big thing about the initial piece. We could revisit early, perhaps having a few sites that would be early sites. That would be something that we could talk about.
Thank you. Any other questions? Ms. Harris?
I, I have one that I think is going to my overall, trying to conceptualize all of what we're actually talking about here. And so I guess my question goes to when we're looking at being in a place where we already have three days to make up. And when this, when you had your stakeholder engagement groups and the survey. Did those conversations include asking people about their preference? For which of the days, opportunities we've already built into the calendar? To use to make up the three days that were already in the hole for? So or were we really just talking about this prevention piece about? And to prevent us from accruing any more days that we have to somehow make up our calendar? Is there energy around, you know, using a virtual day in, on an inclement weather day?
Ms. Harris, that's a great question. We, we did both. We discussed how can we be preventative in the future, which is what I highlighted through that feedback. But it was a great opportunity to hear what do we do with these three extra days that we currently have? Do we extend the school year? Or do we look at the pre-identified days that when the calendar was approved through those professional days? And really consider those makeup days? These are some of the themes that we heard. Please look at some of those days, but the consideration, people didn't want to necessarily look at today. Because they thought it was too soon when we were doing the input last week. There was some energy from the community survey, the community survey that went to our families that felt like, let's look at an extension of the year. But then let's also consider our professional days that are actually identified there. And considering the professional days. I think that what people wanted to stay away from was also spring break. It didn't feel good a couple of years ago when we had to use spring break, even though we identified spring break to be able to utilize it. And then again, I'll just go back to, as we look at those days, just considering the operations that we would need to plan for, which we would definitely delve into. And then considering the, the interests that have been identified by other stakeholder groups around that. But those professional days are queued up for us to be able to use, should we need to do so.
Yeah, it just seems I, I would have anticipated exactly what you said, little interest in taking the days out of spring break. And I guess from the student perspective, and I, I echo Ms. Looney's concerns that there was not a lot of student engagement on this question. But from that perspective, I would think there would be little interest in making the school year longer.
That is correct for students. That is correct.
Thank you.
With an exception, just on that note, with an exception of our seniors. I do think that's really important to think about, you know, because they, they are a group who would not be impacted in the same way that, that, that others are. So just wanted to note that.
Ms. Looney?
Yeah, I have a few things. I first, I, I feel like we're kind of talking about students and how they feel without ever making an effort to actually include them and poll them. I did just like an informal social media poll of about four thousand people last night. And I got actually quite an opposite reaction to what is being shared here, that there's a lot more interest from students in extending the school year. Than than getting rid of inclement weather days, which is why I think I'm personally opposed to this plan. And I think if we did a student poll, we would find that students on the whole are as well. And I've spoken to quite a few staff. Who feel that this is a kind of insensitive plan. When a lot of students and staff who have always enjoyed a good inclement weather day as a break, a serendipitous break from school. But especially this year, when we know that the pressure on students to close those learning gaps. And to get back in the classroom and for teachers to make good progress has been enormous. And I think especially this year, it's been a really nice break to have those inclement weather days in the middle of the school year. And, you know, this is the same school system that, that talked about adding three additional half-days to this year's school calendar. Because we recognize the increased workload that has been put on staff and students this year. And it sort of feels like doing this is walking back on that commitment to mental health and recognizing the increased workload that we've had. And I also think that students aren't machines, right? And I know we all want to close the gaps and get back to learning and, and get back to where we were two years ago and pass that. But adding virtual instruction on what could have been an inclement weather day, I don't think is going to minimize disruption in the way that we think. We know that internet bandwidth is extremely variable across the county. So even students who have internet at home may not have it in the same way as wealthier, often whiter peers. We know that not all students have a quiet space to learn at home. We know that students who are enrolled in our career and technology education programs may not be able to access any kind of education at all. When what could have been an in-person day of instruction, even if it's added on to the end of the year, could have been a full day of instruction for them. But now that it's virtual, it's almost impossible to get that hands-on instruction. That's, that's part of their programming that they are entitled to. So I feel like if we do decide to move forward with this, we're choosing to create what we know is a more inequitable learning environment. Instead of doing what we've always done and going with in-person instruction, which we know is best for students and is the most fair.
Ms. Wolf, if I may, thank you, Ms. Looney, for those, for those comments. I really do appreciate it. And I think you stand as one of our board members who are able to absolutely get that student voice very quickly, like you just said, a poll last night. It's, it's something that you're able to do to gather student voice. A few things I just wanted to point out in regards to your comments. One, the first is that snow days could still exist. I opened up just, just sharing that it really depends on every single weather circumstance that we are facing, in which we have to make the decision. In terms of what's best. I give you a perfect example. It was the first week of January when we had three snow days. And yes, the first two definitely required people getting themselves out and, and getting dug out, as they say, in a, you know, a number of other things to just be able to operate. But when I reflect on it, that third day, you know, we could have been ready to go. And, and I just don't think this is a situation in which one, one defies the other. It's a matter of just a level of flexibility. And I know all along, we've talked about how COVID nineteen has presented the opportunity for us to revisit all of our processes and procedures. And here we are. You know, just making a commitment to do that. Secondly, I think there is more opportunity for us, I know there's more opportunity for us to continue to engage. For all of our students who do have reservations about moving to virtual learning, we absolutely want to know what those reservations are. What are some of the specifics that make them concerned about that? Because we absolutely stand committed to making sure we work those issues through, depending on what we hear from our students. We've said from the beginning, we're going to continue to learn, adjust and adapt. And this situation requires that we do the same. And as we poll our students and, and, and gather information from them. Again, they all, you know, many of our students have, are impacting in many different ways. I, I don't know what the poll, whether the poll would have broken our students down by grades. But I would imagine our seniors, who the year ends at a certain point in time, are not going to be able to, you know, they, they'll have much more flexibility. Than those who would be staying and continuing the school year. Who, who very well, well, would have concerns about possibly going close to July. So as we think about future engagement, I think breaking the data down to look at whom's, who is saying what. And being able to differentiate our plans based on that information is going to be key moving forward. And we still have much opportunity to do that and to still be very flexible.
And, and I appreciate that response, but we don't have any data to break down, right? Because we never polled students. Because we never polled students. So, I think to make this decision without ever asking for input from our greater student community, besides just very exclusive, small groups of hundreds of students, which we know are already engaged and come from privileged backgrounds, to make this decision without polling the wider student community, I think is going to be a real hit to student morale at a time where we know students are already overworked and exhausted.
Okay, I'm going to call on, I saw Ms. Mandrowski, then Ms. Silvestri, and then Ms. Evans.
Great, thank you. Yeah, thank you all for the work that you've done on this. You know, one quick comment is that I very much appreciate the fact that you've recognized that this doesn't mean that we will have no snow days going forward. I appreciate that this is an option to look at, but I am, always have been a big supporter of snow days, not just because of connectivity issues, but it's because it is, it's a good mental health break day for our students, our staff, and all of that. I have a question about the connectivity. I'm guessing, I guess this would be from Ms. Trumpkamp. Over the last two years or so with COVID, do we have any kind of data on what type of connectivity we've had for our families?
Hi, yep, thank you for that. We, when we pivoted to virtual over the last 20, what are we on now, 23 months, 22 months ago? We tracked connectivity, we tracked attendance, we tracked student engagement. And we had during that time, it was something like 99.6% connectivity and active engagement, where we tracked student logins. We also looked at student submissions, assignments through Canvas and attendance data. So, our data, you know, indicated that in some way, our students were able to connect and engage in the learning experience. That's not to say that there were not challenges, right? We know that older siblings helped younger siblings. We know that families needed to stay home from work to help children connect. We know that multiple kids were in the home and trying to, you know, find a space where they could engage, you know, effectively. So, you know, I don't want to minimize those challenges in any way. And our job is to really try to help layer in supports for those families and ensure that not only they have the technology and the connectivity that they need, but that we help them be able to access the learning experiences during the day when they're occurring and then make those available beyond the day should they run into challenges. But our connectivity indicates that our families across the district, by and large, were able to connect and the kids were able to engage successfully. So, we feel really good about where we stand positioned as a district.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. I also had a question about the fact, you know, I happen to agree. I don't know how productive the makeup days in June are or how happy families are about going to school until in July. I know a lot of our families, you know, make plans. They sign kids up for camps and things like that, and that always starts to become an issue. But in terms of makeup days, you know, is this the kind of thing that we could look at maybe using to, instead of having a, taking away a full professional development day, for example, or a full grading day, to look at doing something virtually like this and maybe making it an early release day so that teachers don't lose the full day, if that's something that we need to take into consideration, but that they still get that extra time, or some extra time, obviously not. But if it's virtual, you know, it just gives a little bit more flexibility as opposed to us doing an in-person day.
This is Mandrowski. It's something that we did ask the state. It is not something that they're willing to do at this time. Their intent for this application and this plan is to, for school districts to not accrue additional snow days, not to assist us in making up days by using the virtual status. It is something that we thought was an intriguing aspect and actually came out in some of the stakeholder engagement, such as even the idea for the makeup days that we do have, is there a possibility of half-days instead? But it's something that we can continue to ask the state, but that's not what they said they intended initially.
Okay, because like I know Prince George's did that last week, I think it was. And, but you're saying if we had done it on the front end, it would have been okay. But now that we want to, are considering doing it on the back end, it's not okay. And we have to, still have to request a waiver if we don't want to add on the extra days? Okay.
Ms. Silvestri?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I support this change going forward. I think it's a good model for now and for the next calendar year to calendar in some snow days so that we all know that we need them and enjoy them. But then instructional days are not created equal. They are not as meaningful at the end of the school year as they are, especially now that we are beginning the second semester. So, I plan to support this change, and I just wanted to express those thoughts. Thank you.
Ms. Evans?
Sure, I too wanted to say that I support the efforts that were made to put this together and as well get the support from the state or get the approval of the state. And although we weren't able to survey the students, because I do value their voices, what I am hopeful of is that we were able to survey their parents. And hopefully that included the student voice, parents asking their students and being able to chime in. So, just wanted to add that, that although students weren't able to give that input, that we did survey their parents slash guardians, and that makes a difference. So, my question is, when we go back to decide how we're going to make up these days, are we going to be able to cast a wider net to be able to include all of our stakeholder voices on making that decision? Or are we deciding that today? I don't know who that question goes to.
Ms. Edwards, Mr. Hollis?
Yes, we're not coming today with a proposal in terms of how to make up the days that we have used, the three that we do owe in terms of to meet the 180. However, we do have this initial concentrated feedback. Today, there were some options presented in terms of how to cast the wider net, and we will definitely do that to be able to be considerate of all students, staff, and families. And we can share that with the board in terms of what that plan is, as well as the results as we come back to make that recommendation.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And then once again, this plan is not doing away with snow days, but having us come up with ways to, as we, because like you said, we're just in January. And typically in February, we've had some winter storms as well. And we don't want to extend the school year. We don't have to. And if having those virtual days will help us, then that's what I want us to be able to do. So, thank you for the work.
Yes, Ms. Evans, and just to reiterate, this does not do away with the snow day. It just creates an option for us, should we get a snowmageddon? Or should we get additional days in which we know that we need to consider an alternative so we don't accrue more time to make up at the end of the year, throughout the year?
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to reiterate that. So, I don't want the community to misunderstand that we're not saying no to school, to snow days, but we just want to have a plan in the event. Because there have been years when we've had, I can't remember the exact year, where we almost had like a whole week off of school, right? I don't know if that was 2006 or when that was, but I just wanted to reiterate that, that we want to take advantage of snow days when we can, but we've already exceeded our limit. I believe we said that, right? Yeah, so we do need to have a plan. And we've heard, and you know what, and the other thing is, the survey was down the middle pretty much, right? So, there were parents who want the virtual option, there were parents who want the snow days, right? And we just want to make sure that our students are able to get the instruction that they need without keeping our students, our families who've made plans for the summer, and our teachers beyond the time that we need to have them. Okay, so thank you, thank you.
Thank you. And we're taking comments that are in addition, additive. At this time, we don't want to be repetitive. So, I want you to consider that. Ms. Looney?
Yeah, just one last thing. I know that there's concern about student attendance when we add on extra days to the end of the school year. But that's with a few months of additional notice. If we end up doing virtual instruction on an inclement weather day, that's with, I think, max two days of prior notice. I think that should be a higher cause of concern for student attendance than one that is with many, many months of prior notice.
Thank you. Ms. Harris?
Yeah, I just wanted to build on what Ms. Evans just said, just making clear that, you know, what we're being at, what's being presented to the board today is to approve the opportunity for the school system to consider using, making weather, inclement weather days, virtual learning days, not saying that we, that the system would make that decision. And so, I guess this is to you, Dr. McKnight, perhaps you could share a little bit about, or perhaps it would be an opportunity to engage more student voice in how you're thinking that that conversation or the factors you would consider would be, because we, you know, we've got three days we have to make up, we have eight. The calendar currently has eight makeup days built into it. So, it could be a conversation around, do we want to chop in more of those? Build, you know, take in spring break or something like that, or prevent us from having to take any more? And so, what, how you're thinking about that, you're going to weigh and balance those issues and concerns?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Harris. When I mentioned earlier, there is the opportunity here for further engagement. This is exactly what I am discussing. We have a number of days that we have as options to be able to make up. And I think some will find some of the days easier to manage than others. But this is a prime opportunity for us to be able to collect feedback from our community, from our students and others in terms of, you know, what will you see as most impactful and which days are not? And I think to be able to collect that feedback and have the input of our staff and students allows all of us also on the front end to make a commitment to say, you know, since we have collectively said overall that these are priority days, let's make the best of those days and be present and be there so that we can make it a meaningful opportunity for our students. So, I will, the staff will coordinate that, and we will come back to the board once we've done some of that work to come back and share what we have found and what those opportunities would be for makeup. We'll come back and share that with the board.
Okay, thank you. Do you have a resolution at this time, I believe, Dr. Dawson?
Yes, yes, we do. Whereas synchronous virtual learning provides an opportunity for continuity of instruction on days when school buildings are closed due to inclement weather. And whereas the Maryland State Department of Education has approved the virtual inclement weather day plan submitted by Montgomery County Public Schools. And whereas synchronous virtual learning on inclement weather days counts towards the 180 days of instruction required each school year by the Maryland State Department of Education. And whereas the adopted 2021, 2022 traditional and innovative school year calendars, which included stakeholder input, have limited, built-in inclement weather days and contingency makeup days resolved that effective immediately, the interim superintendent of schools may use discretion in transitioning to synchronous virtual learning on days when school buildings are closed due to inclement weather.
Okay.
Can I just ask a question, Ms. Wolf?
Sure, go ahead, Dr. Johnson.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to delay, but I, because I'm new at this, this may be an obvious question. But do we want to make, do we want the language interim superintendent in the resolution? Or should it read the superintendent of schools? Just so that it applies beyond, just beyond the interim superintendent status?
That's a good point.
I personally would think that it would have to be the interim superintendent since we are planning on voting on something today, and that's the status that we have. I certainly understand your concern about having to revisit it at a later date, but...
Can we add interim superintendent and?
Slash superintendent. Yes, I think that would work. That would work. Ms. Harris?
Moving on, Dr. Johnson's concerns, I'm wondering, since SDE has said this approval only applies to this academic year, and we have an interim through the end of this academic year, is that an issue? Just a question.
I hear you. I'm not sure what the answer is to that. Ms. Williams, you have any thoughts about that?
Yes, President Wolf, I wanted to say, yes, this is because this resolution is related to this current year. We'll be bringing something back generally that will apply to future. So, we both have an opportunity to make that adjustment.
Thank you, thank you. Ms. Looney?
Yeah, I just wanted to elevate a comment I made at an earlier board meeting, which is that I hope that in the future, this conversation will be included as part of the calendar development process, which has a very established process of community engagement that includes both smaller work sessions with community members to get deeper feedback, as well as a survey that's sent out to all of our community members. And I just hope that in the future, especially if this year ends up being a trial run and people develop different opinions than what they had before going into this, I really hope that we can return back to our community and make a decision with them in the future.
Okay, are there any other comments? We have a resolution on the floor. Can I get a motion to accept?
Move to approve.
Can we motion to amend, to add slash superintendent?
I think we decided that we didn't have to do that because it only covers current year. Do I have a motion to accept?
Move approval.
All in favor, raise your hand. And it's one, two, three, four, five, six. I, hold on, because I mean, there's so many people on the screen. I see Ms. Mandrowski, Ms. Wolf, Dr. Daca, Ms. Harris, Dr. Javtus, Ms. Evans, Ms. Silvestri. That's it. And Ms., is there any abstentions? Ms. Looney? I know you don't approve.
I don't approve. I'm opposed to it.
So, we have one, one opposed. All right, I think that's everything we had for today. Does anybody else have anything? Okay, with that, I'll see you all next time. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good afternoon.